Here he is, yay!
They seek to make it.
Michaelson, wait for you.
I thought you were lost.
Hang up. Please rise to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the minutes of last meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve the minutes of last meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve item number five is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve the item five, the dispersment of cash dispersments and electronic fund transfers as stated. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number six was listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve the seminar request and payments for seminar trips. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seven is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve item seven on the agenda, resolution to advertise sale of four vehicles. These are old tree hat buses that are off the road. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any may.
You better do that one, Mary Ann, I'm not sure.
I'll make a motion to approve item number eight is listed on your agenda.
One second.
I am not convinced that...
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Hall to approve item eight. Questions or comments?
Question. Commissioner Jean Greco, could you explain why you have doubts about this motion?
Well, it's a lot of money and I see it between the CCAP County Commissioners Association as opposed to other agencies within the District Attorney and Adult Probation Office. I don't know enough about whether we need that case management system and what other connected systems are going to be hooked up to, whether I'm comfortable with spending $33,000 taxpayer money for what I see. It's that simple. May be a very good thing.
Thank you.
But I can tell you I'm not comfortable with what I know right now to spend that kind of money on it.
Any other questions?
Yeah. What do you, Mr. Hall and Ms. Warren, know about it that...
The program itself, first of all, it's a switch from trying to house the software and the hardware here for programs. It's using CCAP, which would house the hardware and software, which takes a lot of financial burden off the county, first of all. Secondly, the programs that this references are all programs that, some of them are in place now, others will be coming shortly, which allows all the groups to communicate with each other and share data. It's also allowing each individual department to be able to put their information in and also get reports out so they know what's going on.
Do you have any idea what the cost would be after three years?
After three years, it'll be the maintenance agreement and the maintenance agreement after three years, I'd have to look that back up. It's a very reduced number. But the software itself will go through changes and upgrades after about three years. So after about three years, like any software, there'll be additional things that'll have to be done to it. Most of the software that we run in the courthouse, a lot of it, we're trying to change out is old DOS programming that's been outdated for a decade. Yes.
I agree with you, the cost reduction or the hassle of having it on site, the problem is if this system is not available or goes down, you can't do anything, you shouldn't.
They have a backup system. They don't house it all in one location. They have a backup location so it doesn't run on just one server. So if one location goes down, it automatically reverts over to the other location. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Yes or no?
Motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Approved by Commissioner Jean Greco, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve the exoneration as still listed. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, carry.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 10 is listed on your agenda.
A second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve the agreement with children and youth in the United Children's Homes Integrated Haze and other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, carry.
Motion to approve item number 11 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve item 11 to hire Lisa Minor of Montrose to the open full-time custodian position. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there were no bids received for the refuse dump service for the period of December 1st, 2012, through November 30, 2014, that we're doing in Chief Clerk's office by 14:00 on October 5th. We will readvertise this. Okay, roll break. Toby?
Yes, on behalf of the library, we're required by law to make an annual report to you and that's what we're doing this morning. I have here our treasurer, Larry Newhart, our librarian, Sue Stone, and the Free Branch Librarians, and so a former president of our board, this evening. And then we will answer any questions we have later. Then ask Larry to present the report to you.
Should take less than 10 minutes if I don't get any questions. I want to thank you, Toby, and thank the commissioners for listening to our status report on the Susquehanna County Historical Society and Free Library Association, a mouthful better known as the library. We were founded in 1907. We've been serving the citizens of the county for the last 105 years and we continue to do that today and hopefully for a lot longer. From a broad view, we touch more lives throughout this county than any other public service agency here. Our library provides free materials to feed and stimulate the reading and search for knowledge that we have in all age groups within the county. Our Historical Society maintains an historic museum and for the preservation of the history of Susquehanna County as well as the genealogy of the Susquehanna County families. I want to address three issues up front that probably have hit the commissioners' ears over the past several months, and the first one is the ad that we ran with regard to our total expenses and the personnel benefits that formed part of our total expenses. Basically, the ad, we were trying to use pictures worth a thousand words, but we should have used the words instead. And what we were trying to say is that 70% of our total expense is payroll and payroll burden costs, and the only place that we could make reductions in our total expense was in the hours of operation. And our costs are really in line with all the other counties around us. If you take Lackawanna as an example, it's 10 times as large as our library system and 66% of their costs are payroll-related costs. So our employees' take-home pay, as we've reduced hours with the reduction in state funding, our employees' take-home pay went down, and in addition, we asked them to pay a portion of the health benefit costs, and I think that illustrates the dedication of our employees to the mission of the library. The bottom line is that we are a good steward of the taxpayer and donor money that we receive to operate the system. Second question we often get is why raise money for a new library when you can't even keep yourself open on Fridays? And the fact is that there's two different issues. We have a short-term impact with the reduction in state funding, but our long-term view of the need for a new library is very important to the success of the association. So we've had an ongoing effort for the last 10 years to deal with our significant space needs. We operate out of a 5,000-square-foot footprint in the building across the green, and for a modern library today, serving the county of this size and with the collection size that we have, we should be operating out of nearly 20,000 square feet. So it's a significant long-term issue for the association. To date, we've raised over a million and a half dollars of funds from this community, and that shows the support that our citizens have for the building of a new library. And in short, we can't abandon our responsibility for future needs because of short-term impacts, and we continue to see the need for expanding space requirements each year. The third issue, which I know has been discussed here at the commissioner meetings, is the access time cutback that we've made in the Historical Society, and that's simply an issue of lack of resources. We just don't have the money and the support for the machinery to support the people that want to come in and use it, and the expanding use that we've seen over time makes it onerous for us to carve out any part of our budget to support it. I'd like to make a point that we have an impact throughout the county. We have kids reading programs from infants through teens. We have adult and young adult programs that include summer reading and Susquehanna County reads. We have outreach programs that are very significant. For those that can't come to the library, we go to them. We go to nursing homes, senior centers, personal care homes, every county school library. Seventeen preschool programs are supported every month countywide. We go to the county jail, and we could do more, we think, with the county jail, and we serve the homebound as well as the homeschooled. Our database and internet access services, particularly today with unemployment at a high level, have a significant impact for those that are seeking jobs, writing resumes and doing research, and that's a very important part of the service that we provide. We have waiting lines in all of the libraries for the use of the terminals that we have. So the state of the library, like the state of the nation, we have reduced funding from the state. We responded to the reduced funding from the state by reducing our hours of operation. Our assets, as a result, are not fully employed due to the reduced hours. So basically, we have unemployed assets, probably a 20% unemployment rate of our assets due to the reduced hours. Our technology is aging and it's outdated. The Historical Society resources are limited. The museum is cramped for space. We have more items in storage than we have on display. The building's over 100 years old, and other than that, we're doing fine. But we're only doing fine because of the significant support that we receive from the community volunteers. Every year, more than 200 people are volunteers for the library and our fundraisers, and each of you are also, and we thank you for your participation. And all of our trustees and all of our employees will also be at all of these fundraisers raising money for the association. So while we continue to service all of the county, just as the schools and hospitals do here, we can't continue to rely on fundraising and donations for 40% of our revenue, and that's the situation that we're in right now. So what do we need? What we're asking for is consideration for a grant to the association, so from the impact fee monies that the county receives this year, so that we can fund our technology upgrade needs, that we can do existing building repairs and upgrades, which we are not investing in today, and so that the Historical Society can get equipment upgrade and resource needs to allow us to serve all of the users of the Historical Society. The amount we're requesting for these programs is $250,000. Secondly, what we'd like to ask is a tax increase to allow us to restore our operations in all locations. We serve out of Halsted, Susquehanna, Forest City, and Montrose. We operated previously at about 9,000 hours per year, open hours. We'd like to restore that, and we'd also like to build a new library. So we're asking, where our current tax rate is .033 mils, and it's less than a percent of the total local taxes that we represent. What we're asking for is an increase to .0775 mils. That would have an impact on an average tax bill, where currently, the average tax bill is about $8.50 a year for the library tax. That would be an increase of $10.50 per year for an average tax bill to a total of $19 per year. If we had that $10.50 per average tax bill increase, we could begin construction on a new library building next year, and we could restore full operating hours, and we could resume the normal salary administration for the personnel who are so dedicated to our operation. And if we can have the impact we deliver now within adequate facilities, think of what we could do if we had ample and modern space and how many new readers we could serve in this county. So that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it. We have our annual budget here, we have our 2011 tax return, we have our 2011 Form 990, all public information. And any other issues that you may have or questions you may have, we'd be happy to offer, to answer them at any time. Thank you for your time and be happy to answer questions. Toby?
Any questions? We'll try to answer them.
Yeah, we've all heard this. You ran, you came to one of our meetings and explained to us the biggest impact you have financially is being able to staff your facilities to the degree that's required by the gas researchers.
That's one issue, yes.
They're taking a lot of time. And then you ran an ad in the paper, and it was a couple weeks after you were here, it may have just been for too of a circumstance, asking for a tax increase.
Yes.
Well, the obvious question, Toby, and the obvious statement that I have heard, and we've all heard it, is that it would appear that you're asking the taxpayers of the county to fund the gas researchers, because they seem to amend from your statements the biggest impact on your ability to keep open hours for them.
That's not...
It was not received very well.
That's not the biggest impact. That's...
Okay, I'm just telling you, we've heard it.
And I'll ask, many others have comments about this. That was an issue which came up publicly, so I addressed it publicly. It's not, it's not the biggest thing that we're dealing with by far. The biggest thing we're dealing with is that we've had to cut the pay of our employees and cut the hours of operation along the way, and that hurts everybody in this county, not just the gas companies.
The million and a half, you have a million and a half somewhere?
Yes, we do.
Is that earmarked that donation receives specifically?
Yes.
For the building funds, so that you cannot tap that to fund your daily operations?
No, you cannot. That was raised specifically for raising it for the new, we couldn't use that without going back to each one of those contributions.
Okay.
Any comment?
I have a comment, please. Commissioner, I wanted to clarify one thing with you. The issue about the gas people and the use of facilities and the need to compensate for that overburden is on the Historical Society. It has nothing to do with the operations of the library. The library's primary operation is for the general citizenry of the county. That question that was raised about gas people and our inability to service them and their additional strain is on the Historical Society only. So the request for the funding increase is really focused more on the library.
But don't both of you fund, doesn't the library fund the historical, so is it...
Yeah, it's about 10% of our operating budget, so it's not that big of a deal.
So they're not exclusive?
No, no.
They're ones the same, right?
It's all one organization, absolutely.
Well, then where's the distinction that he's trying to make?
Well, the gas researcher issue became a public controversy, and I addressed that here, but that's not the big issue facing the library.
Well, I understand that's not all, but I can tell you, apparently from the public perception, because it was right after that, you had an ad in Mulligan's or something asking for a tax increase, and I got a lot of comments, wait a minute, why should the taxpayers be funding the gas research?
Gas companies, by the way, are considering also helping us upgrade our facilities...
Oh, good, I hope so.
And they're getting back to us about that, they told me.
I just wanted you to be aware of what we're hearing and...
Okay, thank you.
It's an issue.
Mary Ann?
I'd like to ask...
Excuse me, I'll run the meeting, Mary Ann's first.
Mr. Newhart, I just, your report, thank you, I didn't know the library was created in 1907 or anything like that, but I guess I have to say that I'm a little disappointed in how your report went on. It told us all about the Montrose, the main library, and the branches weren't included until the end. I think that your branches are a big part of Susquehanna County Library.
That's what they are.
They reach, you know, the people outside of the Montrose area. One of the things that I have heard people have made, and I just want to know if it's true, that's all, that people have made donations to, say, Forest City or Halsted or somewhere, and the money goes back to the main library. Is that then distributed back to, how to cut, does that work?
When you say the money goes back to the main library, it means it goes back to the parent organization. This is one organization, and we run four libraries. The branch libraries are a crucial part of this organization, but their salaries come out of the Montrose administrative offices. That's where the organization is managed. And so when you say that the money goes to Montrose, it's not going to serve the people of Montrose, it's going to serve the...
Oh, I understand that, but I think what I've been told in the past is that people have assumed if they made a donation to the Forest City Library or to Halsted or Susquehanna, that the money stayed there for a project or something there that is needed, and that that wasn't true, and I...
We have a policy that certain fundraisers, for instance, the Halsted Golf Outing, that money is designated for Halsted and that stays in Halsted. If somebody just gives a, comes in with their annual support check and hands it in at Forest City or...
Okay, I understand.
Then that goes into the pot, which the pot happens to be in Montrose, and that serves the whole organization. The salaries are being paid out of the offices in Montrose.
Okay, I guess I have another question about the, you're looking for a grant right now to the association out of the impact fees, whenever that comes, for $250,000. What is the, what are the numbers that you're looking at to finish out of 2012, I guess? How far are you looking to use that money? What, I mean, are we in a deficit right now to finish out the year? Is that...
Oh, no, no, no.
The money is a five-year program. We have technology, so we have to replace our computers, printers, software, all of the routing routers that we use throughout the different libraries. So for five years, that money would satisfy us to do all of our building repairs, do the upgrades on buildings, fix up the Historical Society equipment, which the gas researchers are using out, using up, and provide that technology upgrade, so it solves our capital issues for a five-year period.
You have a question?
Yes, I'd like to know, is there any way the county can actually enact a tax on the industry to help out with these issues, like the gas researchers using our facilities? Can the county enact any kind of extraction tax or use tax? Why not?
Because there's no legislation that allows us to do it.
No state legislation? Can you...
They're governed by the county code. The county code doesn't permit that.
So can you appeal to the governor as a commissioner that we're in dire need here despite the fact that there's all this gas drilling going on? We're in dire need of funds.
The answer back to that is that we have Act 13. Any other questions? Mr. Newhart?
I was wondering, from the library, they're asking for money from the impact fee from the county. All municipalities in Susquehanna County are also receiving impact, and I'm wondering if they're going to the municipalities and asking for funds from their impact fee, not only the county, since we serve so much of the county.
Good point. Are ya?
We have asked the municipalities for support. Some of them do it, very few, I think. Is that true? A couple of them.
Loving kind service, too.
In kind, yeah, we do have in kind help from the municipalities.
Well, most of them don't have the money until it gets to some pack.
But isn't it true that, you know, the municipalities in some locations give you the building, give you the...
That is true. Two of our branch libraries are housed in...
So municipalities already give them the space, they're not charging you for what you said, too? What is the other ones?
That is true.
Halsted and Forest City.
And the other one's charging?
We pay rent for them.
So maybe, you know, you could ask them for some of the impact fee to pay that right for you?
They help us out there quite a lot, by the way, and that repairs and other things, too, so it's not just them.
But all the branch, all the branch libraries, the municipalities, Forest City also, they help out with repairs.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do, because they value what they've got there, right? You know, it's important.
Any other questions? Motion to adjourn?
I have a question.
I have a question, this is from the library, but I, hi, my name is Tony Sankowitz. I met with you, Mr. Jean Greco, a couple months ago, and I dropped off a formal complaint last Wednesday involving Susquehanna subdivision and land development ordinance of 2011. Did you have the opportunity to review it at all?
I read the letter, and I've got contact into the planning right now to talk to them.
And how long are we going to be working on this issue here? There's a big problem down in Gibson Township. We have a solid waste facility now from the pipelines. Pipeline came in, used a person's property of 20 acres, and there's hundreds and thousands of timber there. There was never a soil erosion plan. I'm asking somebody to please come down, take a look at the site, especially Mary Ann here with conservation. We have a problem down there. When I spoke to Mr. Jean Greco a couple months ago, it was about a stone operation. When I came to the planning commission last summer and brought it to the attention, I was, I was told at the planning commission that the footprint didn't change and that also their grandfather clawed in. To find out, after I went to and made a private complaint to Labor and Industry, that it was an illegal operation, and it has been an illegal operation for the last 12 years in Gibson Township. Now, we are using the land as a solid waste facility in between two major resources. We have two major creeks, and one is a stock creek. I'm asking somebody to please come down, take a look at this. This is an ongoing problem, and it needs to be addressed, and it's a public health concern, considering that I'm only about 60 yards from hundreds of thousands of timber packed in front of my house.
When you talked to Labor and Industry, what was their response?
They shut down. They shut the stone operation down. Now, this is another concern. Once that stone operation was shut down in Gibson Township, then it turned into a landfill. There's no permits, there's nothing down there.
Jim Garner went down there. I think, I think they went down, but then I didn't hear, this may have changed when they were there originally.
Mr. Garner was one of Labor and Industry when the buildings were being occupied as a blue stone cutting firm.
He was there, wasn't he?
Mr. Garner was there. Mr. Garner shut it down because they were a violation of the UCC codes, and also they never had, since 1999, when those buildings were erected, which is 23,000 square feet of buildings and concrete, never even had an occupancy permit or water or sewage, and two industrial sites operated in there.
So what he will do is he will revisit it again and then see if it's a deep...
No, that's not, that's...
Wait a minute.
Mr. Garner, wait a minute.
Want to argue with me?
Yes. Mr. Garner was about the buildings...
No, we're not arguing.
Mr. Garner was about the buildings being occupied. The buildings are not being occupied right now. What's being occupied is 20 acres of land being stored as a solid waste facility. That's what's being done now.
Could I interrupt here? What about there's no ENS plan? If you know there's no ENS plan, you vet the Soil Conservation Department, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And that's why...
When I first started on this, which was three years ago, when I contacted the county regarding this problem that was going on with the stone operation moved in, the prior property owner, Mr. Twining, had removed a large portion of soil there without having a soil erosion plan or a mining permit. So our adjacent properties that were against his property had damage to them because he removed tons and tons of soil from that property. So when the, when the stone company moved in, which didn't have the proper permits or anything, they continued not to have a soil and erosion plan, and their byproducts that they used for the slurring pits just ran right off on the ground into our soil and down into our waterways.
But that is Jim Garner, and that's where he comes in. He doesn't have anything to do with buildings. He has to do with ENS plans and soil erosion.
Oh, oh, you're talking about Mr. Garner, who was with the Soil Conservation?
Yes.
No, he never came out. Only Willie Keeney came out. He was the only one who came out.
Right, well, he was an ENS technician.
And now we have, we had the problem with the stone operation, and now we have, we have hundreds and... And now we have, we have the problem with the stone operation, and now we have, we have hundreds and thousands of timber. We, I probably have every twig that was cut from the pipeline stored in front of my house. It, it's a disgrace. I mean, if anybody wants to look at pictures here, what this site looks like?
They will contact DEP.
This is what I'm talking about, the soil and erosion plan. For the last two years, the people in that little community have sucked in stone cutting. Now we're sucking in the dirt from the tractor trailers coming in hauling in all of the byproducts from the pipeline. This is the property here. That's taken up far away on the property there that shows hundreds and thousands of timbers that are being brought in. And the amazing thing of it, this property is owned by a township supervisor, Dennis Nolton.
Have you talked to him?
Oh, yes.
And what was his response?
Here's a response.
Well, like I said before, I got your letter late last week, and I would have a meeting. I'm trying to get set up with planning, and I will get with Marion, we'll get with Conservation, and we'll go from there.
Because there is definitely a problem here with public health and safety, and also any kinds of sanitary, but those, those timbers are going to rot in front of our homes.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
Me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name is...
Go ahead, take off your hat.
Why?
You got the American flag there?
Yeah, I see the flag. What of it?
Well, in a meeting, we normally, a meeting in front of the American flag, we normally take off our covers.
Why do you do that?
Out of respect for the flag and the people that died to give us the right to assemble here.
I don't think wearing a hat is disrespectful for any of that.
All right, well, you feel that way, you can keep...
I'm going to take off my hat to maintain decorum of the room under protest, because I don't think that matters.
Keep it on.
Let's talk about respect for a second, okay? So I've been doing a little bit of research, and here's what I'll tell you. I live in the town of Union. Are you the three commissioners? Just three? I'm sorry, this is the first time I've been here, so thank you for letting me address you today.
Wait a minute, you're in the town of Union?
I live in the town of Union. However, I consider it to be Greater Binghamton. I've lived in the city of Binghamton for about, for about 10 years. And I want you all to understand something, because I have seen videos of you all on the internet being very dismissive about reports of water contamination in Sesquahana County. And let me tell you, this is not appropriate. And I'll tell you why. Because I'm not sure if you fully comprehend this, but what goes on in Sesquahana County is directly impacting the health of 47,000 people in New York. The city of Binghamton has an antiquated water treatment facility that was built in the 1950s. We take our water directly from the river. Now, I'm not sure if you know this, I'm not sure if anybody knows this, because I just put this all together a couple of weeks ago, and I've been, and I've been blogging about it. You haven't heard what I, please allow me to speak, because I'm not sure you've heard what I'm about to tell you. This is new information. So you all here, there are 200, approximately 270 square miles of Sesquahana County is in the headwaters basin of the city of Binghamton. That's where I get my water from. Over the last four years, I don't think it's been four years, the gas development in Sesquahana is, Sesquahana County, I believe, has lagged a little behind, like the Pittsburgh area. So it's probably been about the last two years. Let me tell you what's happened. 98 unconventional gas wells have been drilled in Sesquahana County upstream of the city of Binghamton's water intake. Now, if you look at the average water use over the last 20 months for a frac job in Pennsylvania, the average is 4.3 million gallons per frac. And gas industry data says that the amount of chemicals they use is 0.5% of the solution. Okay, let's figure out how many chemicals have been introduced through leaky conduits into the ground upstream. Listen to me, please.
Listen, no, you listen to me.
This is a serious matter.
This is my thing.
This is a serious matter that affects the public health of 47,000 people.
All the sheriff.
47,000 people. Please hear me.
Contain yourself, you will be removed. Do you understand me?
Yes. This is a serious matter that affects the lives of 47,000 people. 0.5% equals, Commissioner, I would like your attention, please. 0.5% of the volume, do the math, 4.3 million gallons per frac. Let's assume each of those 98 wells has been fracked once. It comes out to be 8,500 tons of chemicals, toxic chemicals, have been introduced into the headwaters region upstream of a city of 47,000 people. This is a serious problem. Hi.
Is there a point?
Okay, so that's the first comment. The first comment is just, just to let you know that what goes on in Sesquahana County affects New York. It's affecting the public health of 47,000 people, point one. Point two, this woman over here was talking about unpermitted activity. I would like to tell you about some unpermitted activity. I took an airplane ride yesterday over Sesquahana County, and I have video. It's going online, little by little. Let me tell you what I saw. First of all, there are quite a few, according to this woman's testimony, I believe that quarries need to be licensed. Now, what I will tell you, you can only see this from the air. I really recommend that you take an airplane flight over the county. Because what I will tell you is there, this county is being scarred tremendously at 2% development. This industry is 2% developed, and there are incredible scars for well pads, access roads, pipelines, and this is what surprised me. I didn't, I didn't think about this. But you can see it from the air. There are illegal quarries. There are many illegal quarries in Sesquahana County to service well pads and access roads. There's a big quarry demands on that, and the existing quarries can't keep up, so there are illegal mines. Have a look at that. That's number two. Number three, there is a facility in Sesquahana County, five miles from here, due southeast approximately. It's called the Williams Central Station. I've been doing a little research on the Williams Central Station. And here's what I will tell you. It is a massive facility. It's 43 acres. And it is unpermitted. This is the beginning of a 121-mile-long, 30-inch, high-pressure gas transmission line called the Constitution Pipeline, which is in prefile with FERC. There is no permit. There is no federal permit for the Constitution Pipeline. It's in prefile, the earliest stages. Furthermore, I was just about a month ago at a meeting in Montrose High School that was a DEP hearing. That facility is seeking to apply for an air quality emissions permit. This is very interesting, too. The amount of greenhouse gas equivalent emissions from CO2. Commissioner, I would like, I would really appreciate your attention. This is an extremely serious matter. This is an extremely serious matter. So let me tell you the, the amount of emissions that this facility is going to generate. And it turns out to be 98,000, 98,801 tons per year of greenhouse gas equival, of CO2. Now, just to put that into scale, let me tell you how big 98,000 tons is. It's a train, you've all seen those coal cars on the railroad tracks, they're really big, these hopper cars. They're 100 tons. 98,000 tons of CO2 from this facility is going into the air every year. It's a train of 100-ton coal hopper cars, 10 miles long. That's going into the air every year from this facility, and it doesn't, they're building it, and it does not have a permit. It doesn't have a DEC permit, it doesn't have a FERC permit. But you know what? These operators that are dealing in this county, Williams Cabot, they don't give, forgive me for breaching decorum for the moment, but they don't give a damn about your permits.
You need to get...
They are operating illegally in your county. That's the point.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Mr. Ainge?
I'd like to just supplement the Gibson Township lady here. I had sent two of you a letter that, from the Milford Borough. We have an issue with, well, it's the development plans, subdivision and land development plan in the Planning Commission, and she's a little further ahead of us. I did send a letter, sent both of you a copy of that, got a response. And we sent a letter filing a complaint with the Planning Commission. And I don't think I sent you a copy of that, but the Borough will be doing that. And then they seem to be having a problem as to who enforces that ordinance. And I'm getting the feeling from them, we'll get it in writing, whatever it is, that they're going to come to you and say, well, it's the county's responsibility, and I believe it is, but you've given it to the Planning Commission. And I think we're gonna, we're gonna have, we're gonna have...
You're right, it is. It is a county, but what's going to happen here, Rick? Because I, because I'm familiar with what's going on down there. Pretty close to the creek, we gotta go through our soil conservation. Who will get DEP involved, because there's some DEP issues there. DEP being what they are will, will hopefully do something. But in both of these instances, what if we have a catastrophic flood again with this stuff right next to the stream? You know where it's going.
Oh, I, I...
It's gonna create a mess.
That, that's wonderful.
We can't, we can't let that happen.
That that's a specific concern, but the general concern there is, and this is all my interpretation, you're a lawyer, but the land development part of that ordinance, you don't need subdivision for land development.
If it's being violated, we gotta enforce it.
Who's we?
County.
Who are you gonna go through? That's, that's the question. You go through the, is the Planning Commission gonna say, we have a violation, and we're gonna follow it? Or are they gonna say, well, we gotta go check with the commissioners and see what we're gonna do?
No, if there's a violation, it's enforced.
So it's your opinion that the Planning Commission should be doing that and taking care of it, not coming to your opinion?
Yeah, but it comes directly because they're an agency in the county.
I understand that, but I guess I'm more concerned about the process.
I guess I'm not unconvinced.
I'm more concerned about the process. I envision.
Oh.
I envision them coming, every time there's a complaint, they're gonna look at it and say, well, we don't know. We could go to court, we better go up and talk to the commissioners.
Well, if it goes to court, maybe that's where it needs to be, because...
Who's gonna take it there?
The county through its county solicitor.
With, on behalf of the Planning Commission?
Uh, yes, if that's where the violation is, yes.
All right, so you...
Yes, that's the easy part.
Your interpretation would be the Planning Commission would initiate that?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that, that sort of goes to her, because this...
You can't, a private individual can't, should have to take on the burden of enforcing the county ordinance. That's our responsibility, and it's happened in the past.
I took the burden for two years, Mr. Jay Greco, Mr. Hall, and I've taken the burden for two years to shut down an illegal stone operation. I was told by the planning commission that it didn't change the footprint, that it met all the requirements. And I also was misguided by Gibson Township supervisors also. I put a big burden on Chris Burdick, the chairman. I don't know what was ever related to the planning commission area. But I took two years, it was my, it was my private complaint. Four binders later, three years of shutting down an illegal operation that then turned into a solid waste containment.
Well, now it's different, so now I think it's...
This property here is a $2 million loan.
Okay. Well, we've already discussed it. Where do we get back to, Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Greg Stevens, Silver Lake Township, and Mr. Jay Greco, Mr. Hall, and Ms. Warren. If you're expecting the DEP to do anything about any of these issues, forget it, just pitch it. They're not going to. There's my answers left. When I was here a couple of weeks ago, I said I was waiting on my right-to-no request from the state. Three simple questions. I asked about safety of rest water from restaurants, public restaurants. They punted completely on it. They took 35 days and told me they're not gonna answer the questions. It's, it's under investigation, so they will not tell us. Number two was farms that produce food that we all eat, probably sitting down at the stores. Zero. They won't, they won't answer the question. They won't even, they won't even tell me they're even looking into it. They won't test anybody. If you have a well pad on your property and you're producing farm, there is no law to check the water quality that's going into those animals. Zero. This is not just in the county, this is in the whole state, but let's just talk about Sesquahana County. We have a lot of farmers here. Third was public schools. They have punted completely on the public school issue. They will not tell me or show me where they're testing when there is any drilling activity, not even within 2,500 feet, which is the law now, or 1,000 feet, like we have over in Oak Plate. Zero. This is ridiculous. Are we really serving up the public health and safety on the food side, on the restaurants? The farm of food and the, and the children, really? Is that what we're doing? I'm, I'm telling you guys, because this is ridiculous. Now, forget about the DEP side where they punted on every issue, except for they gave me a few documents from the restaurants. There's the ag department. They recommended I contact them. They've completely punted on this also, and my problem was, what they're saying is they don't have any of the records. I'm asking for the records, just happen to have a larger farm producing, near me is the Depew farm. I'm not picking on them, I'm just using them as an example. They said they have no records. I go on Energy Indep's site, where they're talking about the Franklin Forks issue. By the way, the reason they didn't answer any of my questions was that's under, that is under illegal review of documents they're investigating, so they will not give me anything. There is the ID site showing me the pre-drill and tests afterwards of the Depew farm that I can't get from the entire resources of the state of Pennsylvania. But Energy Indep has it on their, on their website. Come on, guys, this is ridiculous. Here's the problem. We're getting poisoned, trespassed on. They're dumping stuff all over my property, and it looks like putting stuff on other people. I wish this was just my yard. But then you, I heard, you've heard what I told you before. The state found them guilty. I have the documents right here, both on my prop, my one-acre property where my house is, and the 115-acre where my family property is. Guilty is charged, here's the fine, pay it, hey, come and fix the property. No. So we have complete and utter disregard from the state. I'm a taxpayer, the state of Pennsylvania, and a taxpayer in the county, and Silver Lake Township. Not neither Silver Lake Township, this county, or this state gives a hoot about any problems we have on our property. She can call about an illegal operation right next to her house. Nothing. It's starting to look like the meeting that I went to at Franklin Township, when one person stood up and said their water went bad, and then three more people stood up. I'm noticing now, more and more people showing up at these meetings, talking about these illegal operations, dumping problems, cutting of trees, and leaving them lay there. They left the trees since last year upon my property. I got Williams to come up, and their idea was to, was to run them through a wood chipper and chip the trees. They did that, except for they chipped them right into my forest. I had a 40-foot-long, 20-foot-wide, 10-foot-high pile in my tree line. Uh-uh. So I made them come up. 17 truckloads of wood chips they took out. They were gonna leave that in my forest, sitting right in my tree line, not even in an open area, in my tree line. This is not acceptable. They're not respecting our land, they're not respecting our property rights, and they're not respecting the rights of our neighbors. There's my problem. We, we think they're professionals, which we all do. Hey, they've been doing this for 100 years, 70 years, whatever. They come and do these operations on our next-door neighbor's property and affect us, or on our property and affect our neighbor. Who do we think's gonna start suing us? It's not the, we, we're not suing the industry, we're, we're gonna sue each other. I don't want to sue my neighbors because the industry doesn't know what they're doing. I'd love to believe they're professionals. They are not. And the state is absolutely turning its back on us. I refuse to pay taxes to an entity that not only doesn't hear what I say, but when I can prove it and give them documentation, they ignore it. They hide behind the fact that, that they're not... I have multiple emails here where they say the answer lies. It's not, they're not releasable because it's in investigation. You know, they've been investigating Franklin Forks for almost 12 months now, a year. A year and a half on well casing failure on the Depw's property. We can't even find out if the, since the Depw's had well casing failures on their own property, on wells there, they won't even tell us if their water quality is fine. This is what I consider, as my father would have, being in emergency management for 63 years. This is a public health and safety emergency.
Thank you.
Yes, it is. So it's big, yes.
Crisis. If you're not gonna get on top of it, I don't have a clue who I have to call. The UN, the EPA, all have a reign of federal agents coming here. You know why? Because nobody else cares here. I pay taxes to them, too, and they have to listen to me, and they have to answer. The EPA considers this an emergency. The school one alone, that's putting five-year-olds to 18-year-olds that are trapped in a school that may have bad water, not just the drinking water, they can go with bottled water, showering and filling a pool full of water, any of that that has chemicals. Elk Lake alone has three private wells, that's where they get their water. They don't truck water in, they fill the pool, they run their showers, all that. Even if you never drink there and bring your own bottled water, I'm concerned. I've got Jay, Jay Springs, right, right in Silver Lake Township. Where do they get their water? How often is it tested? How often is their restaurant tested? Are they tested at all? I went in to find you, know that, went in... I went in to find, you know that, went in to ask, simple question to the people at Heavenly Angels, so I'm not picking on, I love small businesses. Hey, I'd be proud if I owned a restaurant to show I've had my water tested, even with all this trouble's going on, and here's what's happening. We're clean. Awesome. I'll bring my family, let's have lunch. That's not happening. You go into a place and they throw you out. Wait a minute. The restaurant who has to prove they have clean water throws me out. I request information from the DEP and the ag department that regulates them, they won't give me an answer. They're going to stonewall this. How long is the investigation? Call the DEP yourself, Alan and Mike and Marion, call them. When is the investigation to be done in Franklin Forks? Do you know what the ID says on their site with all these test results? It's all, it's all taken care of. There is no problem there. You're making it up. Those people just want money. I heard the same thing about Demick, now Lennox, and over in Bradford County. Why did they buy out three people's houses for 1.6 million? Why did Chesapeake do that? Why did they just finish up gag ordering everybody and buying out their properties? Some people in Demick. Are they going to do the same thing in Franklin Forks? I'm getting tired of this. I'm not, I'm 52 years old, I'm not an idiot. I moved from California. They're moving to $500 million project, if a box turtle is found in the sand, they'll shut the whole project down for the next six months to figure out how to relocate the box turtle. It's ridiculous regulations, but I sure wish we, I could transfer, I brought myself here, wish I could bring some of the regulatory authority here, because none of this would be going on. And here's what you need to push for. I don't want an exemption from the federal government on the Clean Water and Clean Air Act. That is ridiculous. 2005, they've had long enough to prove they can do this without damage for seven years. They can't do it without damage, we all know that, we're not stupid, but they're exempted. So when you call and say gas and oil to anybody, hey, there's nothing we can do about it. I don't care if you're talking to you guys, the local emergency management, all the way up to the EPA. Oh, if we're talking about gas and oil drilling in your area, there's drilling, we don't regulate that, the state does. Who does? The DEP. And I'll finish it with this. Michael Kranser, the head of our DEP, was appointed by the governor. Michael Kranser was the lawyer for the number two largest energy company in this country before he became that position. You know what he was a lawyer for? Not to protect the environment, to defend against environmental lawsuits. I find that the biggest insult. He should either resign, or the governor should fire him immediately and put somebody in that actually, because it's lead by example, you know that. Your leadership is what the other county employees follow. When the guy running it doesn't care, won't return a phone call, won't answer to any of this at all, but they thought it was important enough that, two minutes after I sent this email to Secretary Kranser, it went down the line, and I got an answer within 24 hours, but the answer was to punt for the next 35 days. We don't have 35 days. I don't have 35 minutes. We need to solve this now. We're not going to push it from here. I'm going to say the same thing. I respect all of you for the job you do, but if your number one job isn't protecting the citizens of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and Susquehanna County, then you need to resign or retrain the position. I'm not kidding you, and I agree with all the good things you're doing. When it comes to people getting poisoned and losing their properties in Susquehanna County, you know, because of the bullies that these guys are? I don't like bullies. I was raised, I got a six-foot-three brother who bullied me until I was 10 years old, till I learned martial arts and threw him through a couple of walls. I don't get bullied. I'm not going to be told that I have to put up with poisoning of my water and my land and my air, because that's the way it's going to be. It's not going to be. I didn't move here to rural Pennsylvania to get damaged by these people. Can we coincide? Yeah, if they're following the rules and they don't do wrong. There are so many illegal things going on. What you three need to do, in my opinion, is get on a bus. I went on a tour yesterday to see stuff that is unbelievable and ridiculous. Tanker, tanks on pad sites with a whole bottom rusted out of the tank, and chemicals just flowing into the ground, there's nothing to keep it from going into the ground, right here in Susquehanna County. If you don't know about that, you have to push back. Can you do anything regulatory? No. But you can sure put pressure on the DEP to say, this is our county you're doing this stuff in, and if you're allowing them to get away with this, Susquehanna County is no longer allowing the abuse of our taxpaying citizens by the industry. We're not going to do it. Yes, we love their money. Yes, we want them to be here to fill our restaurants, there's no problem, but please, we're, I'm begging you, more and more people are going to show up. We're not going to tolerate as the citizens, I don't know what you want us to do. Do we all have to stop paying money to the feds, to the state, to the county and say, say, forget it? Until you do your job, not just you, but all of them, why would we want to send money to the problem? That's the problem. We can fix this. Just tell us today. Do the we, the citizens, have to fix this problem, or is anybody in a regulatory authority going to fix it? Because if they're not going to do it, we're going to solve it. I'm not threatening anybody. I'm telling you, we, the people, will stand up. We will not be poisoned, we will not watch our children be put in threat, and I will not wonder if at Price Chopper or at the Robbs, if they got poisoned eggs and poisoned milk because we're stupid enough to buy local. I'm this close to calling for a ban, anybody buying any products that are from a Pennsylvania farm, and that kills me, because that's where my whole family's farming is from. Eggs, milk, meat, poultry, forget it. If it's from Pennsylvania, it's poison unless they can prove it's not. That will kill the whole industry. How about, don't come in any restaurants and eat unless they prove it. I want that restaurant owner so proud, they've got those test results right on the front, and not just for nitrates, nitrites, and bacteria, which is what these guys designed. I want all constituents that goes into the ground from the drilling companies tested. Why aren't they doing it? I have absolutely no idea. Thank you for your attention, and we really need the help. We know you have the power to at least look into it. If you don't, that tells us that there is a problem. In other words, you're not willing to, not that you're going to, you can do it. We're giving you the power. There's taxpayers here.